Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It's our Monday, May 12, 2025 meeting. But all first please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point in time, I'd like to announce the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my immediate right is Commissioner Member Jim Fitzsimmons. Next to him is Commission Member Jeff Kohan. And next to Jeff is Brian Revard, who is an alternate on the commission. To my immediate left it is J.P. Vanoyt, who is the Chairperson, Vice Chairperson of the commission. Next to J.P. is David Parent, who is an alternate on the commission. And next to Dave is Joseph Sanders, who is also an alternate on the commission. At the lower table, to my left is Cheryl Ann Tubby, who is our Recording Secretary. Next to Cheryl Ann is Kevin Pagini, our Town Planner. And I'm Jim Seiter, the Chairperson of the commission. As our first order of business tonight, I'd like to call for a motion to consider approval of the April 14, 2025 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for April 14, 2025.
Does any commission members have any changes, addition, correction to the minutes? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion on the minutes. Excuse me.
I'll second.
I'll ask for a second. Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. At this point in time, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And any abstentions? I abstain in that I was not at the meeting. And before we get started with the first item on our agenda, just a couple announcements. Item number two on the agenda, public hearing for a text amendment for sign regulations. That is going to be content. It's not going to be heard this evening. It's going to be continued to our June meeting. Also, item number four, special permit, Midwood Management Corp., 1020, 1030, and 1044, 1080 Barnes Road. Again, with that, there's no action on that. That'll be continued to our June meeting. Which brings us to the first item that'll be heard this evening. It's a continuation of a public hearing. It's a text amendment, section 3.8, middle housing. And, Mr. Fitzsimmons, would you note all the correspondence? And, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you please note all correspondence for the record, or additional correspondence. Sorry about that.
The commission received correspondence on April 16 from Bob Weidemann, addressed to Kevin Padini, the Town Planner. And we also received another email from Mr. Weidemann on the same day, addressed again to Mr. Padini. That's all.
Thank you. And at this point in time, before we go any farther, as I see Mr. Allenson is not here this evening, Mr. Parent, if you would sit in for Mr. Allenson, I believe you've attended all the meetings.
I wasn't there last night.
Wasn't here? Okay. Well, in that case, we'll jump over to Mr. Sanders. Mr. Sanders, you've been at all the meetings on this application, is that correct? Okay, so if you would, for this application as well as for the rest of the meeting, if you'd sit in for Mr. Allenson, I'd appreciate that. All right, so it brings us back to, again, this middle housing amendment. I think this is probably the third or fourth, fifth time perhaps that we've taken this up and discussed it. While I was not able to attend the last month's meeting, I was able to read the minutes of the meeting as well as to look at the video. And I guess before I, I guess my general thoughts are, after listening to the meeting, looking at the comments from the public, it seems to a very large degree that there's really two items I think that are outstanding for the commission to consider. Certainly if there's others, I'd listen to them. And that's as far as the percentage of affordability that we'd be looking at. I know initially we had talked about 30%. There was discussion about reducing that percentage. I know in the amendment that we've received tonight, it says to reduce it to 15%. Well, I know also then we have some other recent correspondence from our Town Planner that says 25%. So I think there's some certainly discussion that the commission needs, as well as then the, you know, the affordability period, if in fact that's something that the commission can increase or not. I know that we had received early part of last month, a memo from Mr. Pagini, I believe after he had conversations with our Town Planner indicating that at least on 830Gs that you can't really extend the affordability period. But there was at least one individual from the public who had mentioned that some communities have had, when they've come up with their own affordable housing regulations, they've had the ability to extend that period. So I guess those are perhaps things that the commission would like to discuss. But in any event, I'll turn it over to our Town Planner just to kind of give us a update as far as what the changes have been made in the, you know, in the regulation.
We didn't change a lot in the regulation. Per suggestion from last month, we did move it to site plan approval in the residence district. And then in the texts, under the definitions of the middle housing reg, live-work unit will only be allowed in commercial industrial or Route 5 zoning districts. And then we removed middle housing means, and we just replaced it with just a list of duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. And under 6.38(c), subsection A, we changed it to the minimum lot size of the applicable zoning district for new construction only. And then did the same for D. And then in F, we just made it consistent with other requirements, with all of the requirements of section 830G. And then, per discussion last month, made the minimum amount of 15% of the total dwelling units on site. It was originally at 25%. And then we had to make the adjustment for the, has to be state median income or the area median income, whichever is lesser. And then the application materials submitted shall adhere to all of the requirements set forth in 830G, just to make it easy for the applicant. And then the, because we lowered the percentage, the, added another column of 50%. Affordable units would be a percent reduction or enlargement of 55%, but we're capping the height at a maximum of 40%. Just because if we start allowing, you know, heights above 50% with the current way we structure the increased type for setbacks, I think it would be probably too much. I think that was it. And then, as Jim said, we discussed the perpetuity with the Law Department. We didn't feel as though it was legally the greatest idea. It's hard to do deed restrictions beyond 99 years according to a lot of law literature that we've seen. There were some regs that were in perpetuity, but they were so complicated, she was kind of having a hard time even understanding what they meant. And to get into that, I think is going to be too difficult when, I think we're trying to encourage the housing instead of, you know, encourage this reg instead of letting people to use 830G. So I think if we're, I don't think there's anything we can do in a zoning sense that would incentivize a developer to go into perpetuity. Although I like the idea, it just doesn't seem legally feasible because of deed restrictions over time. They just start kind of fading out over time, so. But again, yeah, the Law Department looked into that, that's why I wrote that memo.
So I take it, though, if we wanted to, and I'm not saying that we do, but if we wanted to, the option could be to extend it beyond 40 years. I mean, the perpetuity is kind of a stop, but to extend it for a greater period, that would still be an option. And I'm not saying that's what the commission wants to do, but that's an option that then the commission could consider, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I don't know where the, you know, I'd say anything above 50 to 60, you just start getting into territory where if it transfers ownership a number of times, it's going to be more difficult to keep under deed restriction. So it's just, I think it's a complicated process unless it was town-owned or unless, you know, it's different from a conservation, because it's a private owner. But I think, I think, but if we want to incentivize, I don't know how we would incentivize more than someone just using 830G because they're going to have to, they're only required to do 40 years. I don't know what the, but hopefully economic development might have some other options, so.
I see Don's here, I'm sure he may. All right, thank you, Mr. Pagini. Commission members with, you know, with any comments on the regulation and what's been, you know, what's been suggested, what's been, you know, what's been modified? Yes, Mr. Parent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I read the text, the part of the text amendment, sorry, part of the text amendment that allows reducing parking gives me quite, gives me pause or concern. I think the, you know, the physical fact of life in Wallingford, if you want to live here, you have to have a car. It's, even in lower-income developments, people have their cars. There's really very little way to get around here without one. So I think that if you reduce the, so I think that where we reduce the parking requirements, I think that we do let ourselves in for trouble. Thank you.
If I could just make a comment on the parking. I had spoken with our town corporate council, rather, this afternoon, and she had indicated, with respect to the parking, that's something that we could discuss, the parking regulation this evening, but because it's not specifically indicated on the agenda, it's not something this evening that we should vote or could vote on.
No, that was just my comment.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I just want to make that just clear, you know, right now for everyone. So certainly we can, you know, discuss the parking if we'd like, but as far as voting on that, what's its six, 11, we would not be able, or should not vote on it this evening.
Thank you.
Other commission members? Gentlemen in the back, would you please turn the volume up?
Everyone hear me? Perfect. I think we're there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pagini, one question in two sections. It's been added that minimum lot size of the applicable zoning district for new construction only. Just interested in the addition of those two line items, do you feel that that constrains, you know, the options of potential builders, given the zones that would be affected here? Or do you think that it's a reasonable item that wouldn't, you know, make someone think twice about taking advantage of this regulation?
No, I think it's actually an improvement from the last one. It required a higher lot size last time. So we felt as though if we were going to allow someone to subdivide, you know, in an R6, that they can use new construction, 6,000 square feet. So we thought that just to be consistent with if you're allowed to subdivide, then you all should be allowed to build on that lot, as long as it meets the regulations.
Got it. So it expands over the last definition. Thank you.
Yes, yep.
That's it, Mr. Revard? Good thing. Other commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure I understand, and I know by my count, this is the fourth time we're discussing this, right? I think. So if I understand through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Town Planner, so middle housing, so if I have a raw piece of land in town, I have another option on how to develop it, correct?
Correct.
So middle housing is not necessarily non-market rate, but if I do, if I go non-market rate, people call it affordable, I do have some type of bonus?
Yes.
Okay. Leading to my second follow-up question to you, what is the base bonus? Because I know we've talked about it, and I know, as I reviewed documentation for tonight, I see it in different numbers. What's the minimum, if I'm going for the non-market rate bonus, what's the minimum?
It's a 20%. So with the lot and building requirements, it'd be a 20% reduction of the setbacks, anything on that building lot table, and then 20% on the height as well.
Well, I guess, and I'm sorry, talking from your document, which is titled Revised 5825, it's page 2, F2, if I might. Bonuses for affordable development are as follows. The commission may approve bulk standard lot and building requirements to be reduced or enlarged by up to 20%. So I want to make sure I understand, forgive me, the math. Is that up to 20? So if we, could we reduce it by 10%? But they still, I'm having a tough time with those numbers, just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
So you can do, yeah, basically anything from zero to, or 1 to 20% if they're only putting 15% affordable. If they go up to 20% affordable units, then they get a 25%, up to 25% reduction enlargement. So it's really as site conditions allow. Say if, I don't know, say if there's a house next to them, and you don't feel as comfortable with a side setback or something, so maybe there's, it's kind of site-dependent, so that's why we said, as site conditions allow, based upon the specific project and scope. But, you know, if it's a perfect situation and someone comes in with 15% and they want to reduce all the setbacks by 20%, then it can go up to 20%. If they're only, if they're only giving you that 15% minimum, so it's basically a sliding scale. So if they come in with a project, say, at 30% affordable, you can go up to 35% of a reduction on the setbacks. The height gets capped at 40%, so.
All right, all right. If I could, I'd just, forgive me, let's go forward. Two years from now, it's on the books, and somebody comes in, they're sitting before this group, and then there's different people sitting up here. Are they asking for their percent, and the commission must grant it? Or are you assuming it's a discussion and will be decided during the application process? I, what I'm getting at is the float here, right? Is the idea that they're, what are they providing or what are they asking? And I don't know if this is clear in the way it's written. And I forgive me for getting down to the nitty-gritty, but I'm just trying to visualize. It's on the books, and now someone comes in, what's the intention of the, for the interpretation of it?
Yeah, I would say as long as, you know, they would probably come in with the full 20%, say the commission doesn't like something, you could adjust it accordingly.
Could the commission go lower? Yes.
Yes, yep.
And/or higher?
Can't go over that, you know, amount that's allowed by the minimum, but, or they'd have to put in more affordable units to go higher.
Got it, yeah. And then you go to the, yeah, because it says, right, because the chart says maximum allowances. So, but the minimum could be lower, but it can't exceed the max. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I know, if I heard the chairman correctly, we're still not ready for a vote, but I, it's another housing opportunity for the town, which we need. And I, unlike the incentive housing zone that was passed years ago, hopefully this will spur some action. So, thank you.
If I can just clarify something, Mr. Fitzsimmons. As far as, you know, my position on this, as far as saying it's not ready for a vote, early on, I think my point was, I think there's some additional things that the commission needs to, needs to think about. Again, I'm, you know, I'm looking at the 15%, and, you know, we started out at 30%, then we're at 25%, we're at 15%. To me, I think that's a little bit, but it's for other commission members to decide. I'm not very good at math, and my wife will certainly, you know, support that, but, you know, I was looking at something more at 20%. To me, it's, you know, it's one in five. I know what that is. 15% on something, I'm not quite sure. But that's for other commission members to decide. But I guess I was looking at those points as far as the percentage, the minimum affordability, and then just if the commission wants to consider extending the, or looking possibly extending the affordability period. I'm not suggesting that we do. In my mind, I think those points or considerations we could discuss tonight, so I, again, I just don't want to say this is not ready to vote on. In my opinion, there's two things left. Other commission members may feel differently. And as far as, as I mentioned, as far as the parking, we can, people wanted to discuss that, we can, but as far as being able to vote on that tonight, our corporate council said we shouldn't. But I, I do have just, you know, one question on the parking for next month. You know, it says senior parking, you know, is defined and permitted by the state of, by the state and federal law. With that, it would be a benefit to me for next meeting if we could have just that, Mr. Pagini, just what that definition is of what senior housing is. Because I know Mr. Fitzsimmons, at the last meeting, had talked about senior housing, elderly housing, and all of that, and as far as definitions and exactly, you know, what that means. So, you know, that would, that would be helpful for next month.
I was advised by the Law Department to write it like this.
No, I, no, I understand.
Not trying to be mean.
No, no, I understand that, but it's just, so.
It's a very long.
We have some, we have some appreciation just what, you know, what's, what is the definition of senior housing? Is it over 55? Is it whatever?
Yes, it's a, it's a very long and complicated definition from federal law.
So we'll have a month to review it.
So, Law Department wanted me to just write this.
No, no, I, again, I, no, I appreciate it, you know, what you're saying. But again, just, just so we have an understanding of what it is, if we're able to understand it. Okay, with that, any other commission members would like to make any comments? Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, through you too, Town Planner. The, in the middle housing examples, we have cottage courts, side-by-side duplexes, stacked duplex, et cetera, up to townhouse, live-work. Many of those arrangements seem a bit different than perhaps a set-aside housing complex such as an apartment building. And I'm wondering if, in, I guess in your research and what's typical, how many, perhaps the right word would be households? How many households would be, would be in a typical cottage court? How many separate units perhaps is the right term, a side-by-side duplex? Is this, this lump of middle housing, realistically based on both what you see historically and what we have for properties, how many units per, I'm going to say, site, would you typically envision coming across with this?
For cottage court, I'd say probably nine to 12 units an acre, roughly. Everything else, I'm not 100% sure. It kind of depends on the architect as to, you know, what you're looking at, but, you know, it's probably around eight to nine units an acre, maybe a little bit higher, depending. But, yeah, I don't know the exact, roughly by building code, you can go to around 400 square feet a unit, so it's kind of all mathematical and, you know, what the architect would be able to devise, I guess.
And I think, thank you, I appreciate that. And part of the reason that I ask is that in considering some of the current proposals for lower minimums, someone could have, let's say, an acre of property and put one of these places on, they could designate one unit as affordable, and they can expand the entire thing up to 20%. So I realize that we would still have some ability to have that come back before us, but these aren't like 80, 80-unit developments. And that gives me pause on some of the lower thresholds that, you know, yes, it's meeting a housing need, but how much of a below-market rate housing need do the lower units really, do the lower levels really address? And I don't know the answers to that, but it sounds like we might have someone come in with six units, one unit's affordable to gain the bonuses, and maybe we want to do that, maybe we don't. Just in thinking through it, we're not likely to have 30 to 50 units, for example, come up where, where 20% is, you know, is noticeable, let's say. That was, that was all. Thanks.
Thank you. Other commission members? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I'll go out to the public. Any members of the public like to comment on the application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Amy Sujin, 14 Casella Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut. I was here last month as well. I'm going to make one revision that I will submit to Mr. Pagini. As you were talking on F1, I would suggest, and he and I actually spoke about this, as far as the area and state median income, there's a reference to a set-aside development, which is a defined term under 830G. So I think what you are trying to accomplish, and if this is the intent, that 15% of the dwelling unit, of the total dwelling units in the development would be affordable. And of that 15%, you want exactly what's required by 830G. Half of those at 60% area median income, half of them at 80% of area or statewide median income. Just to keep it simple, just refer back to the statute. So what I did, and I will give it to him, I would revise the language just to use that to your advantage. Affordable residential dwelling units in accordance with the provisions of a set-aside development contained in Congen Stat, Section 830GA6, except that the affordable units shall comprise a minimum of 15% of the total dwelling units in newer existing, newer existing buildings provided that, and continue on with the rest of the definition. It just uses, again, as I said, simplifies the idea, and you're not creating any confusion with the reference to a set-aside development, because in the statute, the term set-aside development requires the 30% affordable. So I just think if you simplify it, but use the definition, in other towns I've worked in, even when it's just something that the developer offers, that's generally how we've seen it come into play, that somebody just uses it that way. And then I think Mr. Sanders' question about the smaller developments and, you know, having perhaps only one affordable unit, I think that's exactly what you want to have happen. Middle housing, and the goal of middle housing is to provide a wider diversity of housing types. So something like a cottage court or some of the duplexes, townhouse developments are going to be naturally occurring affordable housing. They are not deed restricted. They are not deed restricted, but simply because they provide an alternative to a single-family home or to a traditional large apartment, apartment building rental, they provide a greater diversity in the marketplace, they're more attainable, even though they're not technically affordable. So I think the idea, particularly with middle housing, is that you are going to get smaller developments. I drive around town and I sort of look at the smaller lot developments where you might have those opportunities to provide some of the infill housing, frankly, that we have a lot of downtown, and you can create moving forward. It's certainly something that is getting a lot of traction, both throughout the state and throughout the country, as far as trying to provide that kind of in small development infill housing, just because it does provide the opportunity for different housing types that just, even if they're not deed restricted, may be more attractive or attainable to different types of households. So, with that, I'll provide this for the record.
Good enough, thank you. I guess, Mr. Pugini, you've had an opportunity to review that in its entirety?
So, we're kind of going backwards, I think, because we wanted, we had that originally, but we wanted to, we wanted to make it so developers have the option to do either all 60%, all 80%, or they have the opportunity to kind of decide their own split. So, I don't know where we go from here. I think I've been staring at this for too many months. The whole, the whole point, we, we think we had that originally in there as a split, and then we went back and we revised it to, to be the and/or. So I don't know how we can fix that, but.
Is that something that, I guess, is that something, have you discussed this with our corporate council to see just how we, because I know what you've.
Yes.
What you've provided to us, you've discussed with our, our corporate council.
Yeah, she's reviewed this probably three times.
And she's reviewed all of that.
Yes. So, yeah.
I think we're in a bit of a quandary here.
We originally had it as the split, but then we went back because of discussions with Mr. Wedeman. He said it would be more of an incentive to developers to have that option to be either at 60 or 80%, so they weren't stuck within that split, if that makes sense.
I guess if you'd like to comment, but I guess I'm a little confused here.
Sure.
We're going in one direction, then we're going in another.
Because I think what my concern was, was the reference to the set-aside development, Amy Sujans for the record. So if that's the goal, if the goal is to provide 15% at the developer's option of 60 or 80 or whatever reference, then I think the simple solution is then to take out the reference to the set-aside development in F1, because that's where the confusion that I was concerned about, that specifically, the reference to the set-aside development has both the 30% affordability level and the requirement that it be at 15 and 80, oh, excuse me, the 15% at both 60 and 80% of area when it's 30%. So I think if the goal is keep that flexibility, I would just take out, frankly, set aside. You could say as a development at 60 or 80, and you could ignore what I just submitted.
Perfect, thank you. No, that's all I.
Yeah, because I, I think after listening to the, the last meeting and, and, and some comments made by, you know, the development community, yeah, I, I think it's, certainly what we'd like to see is, you know, increase in affordable units, but to give the developer the option of either doing the, the 60, 60, 30, excuse me, 60, 80 split, or just take one or the other. So I think we'd, we'd want to, hopefully other commission members will, will agree with that. We, we'd like to give what we have right now, the option of 60 and/or 80%. So is commission members still on track with that? And I guess, Mr. Pugini, just eliminating the, the set-aside development?
Yes, yep.
So you can clean that language up nice for Mr. Vanoyen if he decided to make a, a motion on the application?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any, any other members of the public like to comment on the application? Seeing none, I guess I bring it back to the commission to, oh, front row, there he goes. Oh, he's going to give us some other ideas as far as how to extend the, the affordability period.
Sure. Don Crouch, Economic Development Specialist. Our office, along with a couple of our EDC commissioners, we've been working on a plan to offer a fixed tax program for, based on non-market rate. So if you're at 100% non-mark, non-market rate, you'd get the best fixed tax program, and then it would slide down to the market rate. Really, we, you know, we, you guys don't need to do all the heavy lifting on giving more to the development community. I, I do think there's, there's both the parcel size, I think Mr. Pugini has definitely addressed that, but I think on the other side is filling that gap for gap financing with their capital stack. I think from our commission, we can, we can help out with that. So it's, it's in the early stages. We're going to have to go to the town council, so it's going to be a little longer process, but just wanted to give you guys an update on that.
Good enough, appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Crouch. Again, any other members from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back to the commission for comments. Again, I guess I come back to the, the initial comments that I made as far as extending the affordability period. You know, from my standpoint, I, I think that I would leave that, as far as creating some incentives, I'd leave that up to the Economic Development Commission to, to come up with something like that, because frankly, I think if the commission decided to do that, we'd be here for an awful long time trying to figure something out. So that would, that would be my suggestion. And the other one, the, the last thing, at least from my standpoint, from, somewhat from a housekeeping matter, is, as far as the percentage of affordable units. Again, initially, what's being proposed here is 15%. As, as I indicated, I, I would be much more in favor of, you know, of 20%. And then if we do agree to that, then just adjusting the, the chart, the affordability unit chart that allows for, you know, reduction in, in some of the offsets. So I guess I'd open it up to commission members as far as how they feel about the percentage of affordable units. Anyone, everybody? Mr. Revard?
Not voting this evening, but I'm, I'd be in favor of increasing the minimum to maximize the amount of units without going too far, which I think 20 is a reasonable number. And I'd, I'd personally be very supportive of, of that. I think it'd be effective.
Thank you. Other commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
I would agree with Commissioner Revard. I, the 20% seems reasonable, and, and I, I think if we can come to some conclusion this evening, it is, as we've discussed, another housing opportunity in the town.
Thank you. Anyone else?
20 works for me.
Thank you. Anyone who may disagree with that, so we can keep things moving. Seeing none, then if we, if we reduce it, rather, excuse me, if we increase it to 20%, then as far as the, the chart that's on page three would need to be adjusted. And I think, Mr. Pugini, I had asked you, yeah, if you would, if we decided to increase it to 20%, if you would have some proposal for making adjustments to that chart. And I see that you have something in your hand, so if you'd like to let the commission know what you may be thinking.
So basically, it's the, the same as the, so it would be 20, 20% would be 20%. It's a little confusing to say it, but, so 20% would be, you'd be able to reduce or enlarge it by up to 20%. That would be the minimum. And then the sliding scale would go 25%, 25%, 30%, 30% basically matches when you do the 20%. So if there's any, if you would like to go higher at the 50%, maybe 55%, something like that, you could always do that, but.
So if you left it, I guess, I think basically what you're saying is on the, the chart, on the left side of the chart, the 20 goes to 25.
Correct.
And then you go 25, 30, 35, 40, 45.
Yep.
50. And then on the, on the right side of the chart, those numbers would, would stay the same. Is that correct?
Yep. Yes, that would be.
Does other commission, all commission members following that? All right, any other, yes, Mr. Sanders?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. To me personally, the middle housing's fine, and I hate to see us unable to move forward with potentially summer schedules and planning and all of that. But trying to figure out the affordability, the affordable housing rate piece, and potentially the parking, could we split those off and deal with those at a later point in time, perhaps? Move forward with middle housing and allow us time and space to figure out the other pieces?
When you say the other pieces, the other pieces being?
The, the bonuses, the, the rate amount for bonuses and, and parking down the road too, perhaps. Get middle housing, if everyone's agreeable, out and done now, without the affordable housing piece and without the parking pieces in there.
Well, I think the parking piece, again, we, we won't be voting on that this evening, so that's, that's something that we'll have a, a further discussion on. As, as far as the, I guess the affordable housing piece, I think that's something that we've been talking about for quite some time. Again, you know, we've gone from 30, whatever, we've had quite a bit of discussion on that. I would, I, I think we have a good deal of momentum right now, and we've spent, you know, four or five meetings on this already. And I know that, at least, you know, talking to our, our town planner, I believe there's, you know, there's developers that are interested now at, you know, at, at looking at this and looking to do some projects. I'd just like to, at least in my mind, other commission members may disagree with me, I'd just like to keep the momentum going and, you know, finally coming to a decision on this, rather than, you know, keep moving on and delaying it, whether it be the entire proposed regulation or just holding off on the affordable housing part of the regulation. I mean, that's, that's simply my opinion, but it's, I mean, obviously you have a different opinion. I mean, other commission members, I'm not sure how they may or may not feel on it.
For clarity, I was just suggesting if we're still, if we're still playing, playing tennis with, with some of the right adjustments, to move forward with middle housing and deal with the others as.
Sure.
Again, for momentum and.
Yeah, no, I, no, I appreciate that, but I think from a tennis standpoint, I think, at least in my mind, the match is over. But that's just my opinion. Any other commission members like to make any comments? Again, Mr. Pugini, before I close the public hearing, is there any further comments that you'd like to make?
In regards to parking, I think the state is looking at potentially not requiring any minimum parking requirements at the state level. So I guess we'll see how that goes, but that's, I think, voted on in June, I believe.
Okay. All right, so at this point in time, there's no further comments. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, Commissioner Saunders raised an interesting point, and I just, I want to be, I just want to be on the record. I don't envision or see middle housing as affordable housing. It has a component for density, but I, I think what this does is opens up residential opportunities in zones where it's not currently allowed. And I think that's, that's, I think that's the core that, that the town planner presented four months ago when we got the PowerPoint, because it is, it is what we're seeing countrywide. You know, the so-called middle housing. I, I never liked the name middle housing, but, you know, after four months, I get it. I'm on, I'm on board, but I, I think, you know, as I, when you were, when you were commenting about the, the affordability or the non-market rate, clearly it's included in several of the zones. If someone chooses to go with a non-market rate, they, they're entitled to some type of bonus, but there are entire sections of this that have no element of non-market rate housing. So that, that, as I, I said to someone just, just last week, someone was asking me about it, and I said, I think, I probably said it two meetings ago, similar to what North Haven has done on Route 5, right? Right now, we don't allow residential-type developments on Route 5 like North Haven did down by Amazon and Quimpiac. This would allow that to at least someone to come in and explore it. That's part of the vision I can kind of see. It doesn't, it doesn't scream to me non-market rate. It says it's more housing options in current zones because we recognize the need for, we need more residential housing. It'd be great if it's all non-market rate, but it's just not, that's not reality, but the idea would be if you could vision sections of town that currently don't allow residential development. So to me, this is a positive step, but I, I respect your opinion, but to me, this is not about affordability, although it's, it's a nice piece, but it's, it's, you know, it's, it's another option. It's another tool in the tool shed, and, and quite frankly, we all know, we need more housing. So, thanks.
Because I know when we started this out, initially, it was just, I think in our downtown apartment district, whatever, we were simply looking to expand that, and expand the options. And I think it was at our, either first or maybe the second meeting when we discussed it, we said, well, why just look at just a, a small area and look at opportunities throughout, you know, throughout the town? And that's, then it's how it kind of morphed into a more inclusive regulation than one that was just something that was just very narrow. So with that, if there's no further comments from the commission, I'd entertain a motion that we close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for Application 901-25, text amendment, section 6.38, middle housing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes. At this point in time, I've entertained a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Application 90 dash, 901-25, zoning text amendment to add section 6.38 to allow multifamily middle housing and affordable housing by site plan approval in the R6, R11, R15, CA12, CA40, CB12, CB40, I20 and I40 zoning districts to allow residential housing in RF40 by special permit, amend the residential parking requirement. We're not doing that one, that's right. Strike that part. And amend TC zoning district to allow for higher density in existing buildings in lots under 2,500 square feet on language dated 5/9/2025, because it better reflects what the town regulations need for planning middle housing with the following amendments. 6.38.4, I'm sorry, 6.38.F.1, eliminate, eliminate set aside. I thought we were keeping development.
Leave the word development.
Yeah, we're keeping development. And 6.38.F.2.B., eliminate 15% and add 20%. And in the table, change the 20 to 25, 25 to 30, 30 to 35, 35 to 40, 40 to 45, 45 to 50, and leave 50? Okay, so no 50, just 45 to 50 on the left-hand column with the heading percent affordable units.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? At this point in time, I'd entertain a second on the.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes. Application's been approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Pugini, for all of your work on this, and we appreciate the members of the public who've come out and over the meetings to give us their input. With that, brings us to our next item on the agenda. Item number three, a text amendment for YNO Wallingford LLC, section 4.9B, educational uses. If the applicant's representative please come forward to begin preparing for her presentation. And at this point in time, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you could read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record. And at this point in time, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you could read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Legal notice, the following public hearing will be heard at the planning, Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting of Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM in the Robert F. Parisi Council Chambers of Town Hall located at forty-five South Main Street, number one, number five oh two dash two five text amendment request for Y and O Wallingford LLC slash Y and O N H LLC to add educational uses as an allowed use to section four point nine B in the industrial expansion district. We received a copy of an application for zoning regulation change on April tenth, twenty twenty-five. We received correspondence from Amy Suchins from the law offices of Hurwitz, Sagerrin, Schlossberg and Nuff dated April tenth. And we also have, attached to that is application narrative, proposed text amendment wording. And we also have two authorization documents signed by the property owners at one Barnes Industrial Park Road and two Barnes Industrial Park Road. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If the applicant's representative please introduce herself and begin her presentation.
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Amy Suchins, office at one thirty-five Broad Street in Milford, here representing the two applicants, Y and O Wallingford LLC and Y and O N H LLC. As I noted in my application narrative, the two Y and O entities are property owners of various locations along Barnes Industrial Park and Village Lane. They bought those properties in early two thousand sixteen, early two thousand sixteen. Frankly, younger versions of many of us in this room were here in two thousand seventeen when the, there was an amendment to frankly delete the educational use from the IX zone. I was here on behalf of Y and O at that time to make some modifications. And ultimately, the commission deleted the, the educational use from the IX zone, as I noted, primarily in concern with what was going to happen on the former Bristol Myers property. What has happened since then is, I think, as many people know, special education needs have grown over the last decade. It's one of the things that is underserved in the community in general. We do see a need, and both of our, actually all of our tenants in the property are interested in expanding their operations in their current locations. They've been there, as I said, since the educational use was deleted in two thousand sixteen, seventeen. And the goal is to allow them to expand either within the existing building or on the adjacent properties to which they already locate. So what I did was tried to do a very simple text amendment, recognizing that these are taxpaying entities. My client is, our clients are private landlords who do pay property taxes in the, in the town. Wanted to avoid any concern about nonprofit entities or the implications on the tax base. So what the language is simply to add educational uses when the property is owned by a non-tax exempt entity and it's located within a thousand feet of the R eighteen zone. The rationale for the thousand feet within the R eighteen zone was to ensure that the, excuse me, the property at one Barnes, which is on the opposite side of the street, was able to be, excuse me, two Barnes, is able to be eligible for the educational use. It's approximately a thousand feet from the edge of the R eighteen zone. Staff provided a helpful color-coded map of where the zone and educational uses could land. Frankly, a lot of that property is either open space or already developed with industrial uses. So I think the ultimate application of this amendment is reasonably narrow to the properties that are existing with either office buildings or the educational uses here. And then the last part that I did want to just note for the record, I had, did explain in the narrative how the amendment is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, noting that the town may need to adjust its economic development strategy and industrial land uses. You've certainly done that with other opportunities in town. And then also, I think particularly relevant here, allowing for this concentration of niche industries in a particular area. Obviously, there is a benefit to providing this type of service in the immediate vicinity. It does allow some economies of scale with the existing tenants. And then the last thing I wanted to note is, again, with respect to the drafting of the regulation and why we think it's appropriate here, the special, special education services are provided differently than I think what we all know in a public education setting. The likelihood that you're going to have a line of cars like you would see at the middle or elementary schools is different. Most of these students arrive either in a private transport or some are dropped off by, by a parent vehicle. But for the most part, these are children or young adults who are arriving by a school bus or things like that. It's a pretty specific window and transportation scenario for, for this particular use. And I think does not have the same impact on any of the surrounding property owners like you might have with the school. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commission members with questions for the, for the applicant? Yeah, I have, I'm try, I'm a little dense at times. I'm trying to understand this chart.
Yeah.
As far as what it's, because there's, you know, there's a lot of information on it, and, and again, I'm just trying to figure out what it's telling me. And especially, it would be helpful if there were roads on here and all of that, because, you know, I'm trying to say, okay, if I'm looking at this, it's the IX zone. Where's, you know, where's Route sixty-eight? Where's Research Parkway? Where's everything else? And then when I look at the top of the chart where you have, it seems like it's the largest spot where you have that thousand feet coming into the, into the IX zone, the very light blue where it says R eighteen. Where is that?
So at the, just to orient you, because I spent a lot of time looking at this map as well. The left side, sort of the diagonal wide road that's coming in is the Merritt Parkway. The Route sixty-eight is in the middle of the page, just below where it says RU forty. And Barnes Industrial comes up from sort of about a quarter of the way up, crosses sixty-eight and then goes into just about halfway up the page.
I'm still lost. I, I apologize. Okay. All right, so that's the new police. Gotcha. Yep. All right, so what's up here? Gotcha, evergreen, all right. So that all comes down there. Thank God, Mr. Fitzsimmons is here. Thank you. Yeah, I, I guess from, you know, from my perspective, I'm looking at this, you know, at one point in time, I know we had some, was at least some interested in, some schools going in it on the Bristol Myers property, which I think raised, raised some concerns. I, I think quite frankly, what you're proposing, there's clearly a need for, and probably an expanding need for the type of schools that your clients are, are speaking about. And certainly to see, in, in my mind, to see that expanded, allow them to expand, especially it, it, we're not going deep. And when I initially looked at this, I said, now, what are we talking about? Are we putting the schools and potentially these schools, you know, in the middle of the IX zone, which I don't think would be very appropriate at all? But looking at the BAP nears now is the way Mr. Fitzsimmons artfully explained it to me. It's certainly, and, and again, is not to be a wise guy, but the way you did also, it's on the peripheral of all these zones. It's, it's not right in the, in the center. So there, as far as having, in my opinion, any conflict with, you know, with traffic and, and all of that, at least in my mind, I don't see how that becomes an issue. So certainly I would, I would support this, but I'd leave that up to other commission members, how they may or may not feel on that. So other commission members that like to speak on the application? We'll start with Mr. Revarve, and then we'll move down.
Good evening, thank you. Would this use in the zone be subject to site plan approval based upon where you would put it in? Similar to, you know, we have several uses that feel similar, you know, non-raising and elder care, you know, outpatient medical, be absolutely supportive of special education type uses. Those are already, you know, contemplated in this zone.
Exactly.
Subject to site plan approval, which would come before this, which I think, in my opinion, adds some protection of this, you know, being dramatically used beyond this small use at this time. So for me, you know, understanding that, I think I'd, I'd be comfortable, it seems consistent with, you know, other uses already available under site, you know, site plan approval.
Thank you. And Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'll be very brief. I, I absolutely support this. You know, I, I think the need for this education is very important and actually happy to see it, you know, being expanded. And I fully support this.
And Mr. Fitzsimmons?
I'm going to make it three in a row. I, I think this amendment, which is, has been noted in the documentation, is absolutely consistent with our plan of conservation development because it will allow the continued growth of private, special private, several private special ed schools in town. Here's the phrase, without a loss of property taxes. And I, I think it is important because knowing the regulation change we made years ago, making these schools non-conforming, this will make them now conforming. So I, I, I support this as presented.
Thank you. Anyone on my left? With that, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public like to come out and speak on the application? Please come forward and name an address.
Don Crouch, Economic Development Specialist, just wanted to say we have no issues with this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no other comments from the public, I'd bring it back to the applicant if she'd like to make any further comments. If not, I'd entertain a motion, unless, Mr. Puccini, if you had some comments?
I have nothing further.
And Mr. Puccini, any comments?
Uh, no comments.
So at this point in time, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application five oh two dash two four text amendment, Y and O Wallingford LLC section four point nine point B educational use.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, now I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application five oh two dash two four zoning text amendment request for Y and O Wallingford LLC, Y and O N dash H LLC to allow educational use in the IX zone within a hundred feet of an R eighteen zoning district dated four nine twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on. Item number five. It's a re-subdivision Hidden Brook Lane consideration and possible action on calling of bonds. And again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you please read the legal notice and note all correspondence.
No legal notice? It didn't make the legal notice. It's not in the legal notice. As a public hearing.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't require a legal notice.
There's nothing to read.
Okay, so if you, if you would just note if there's any correspondence.
None.
None.
Back to you.
All right, thank you. We'll pick it right back up, and we'll just roll it over now to Mr. Puccini. Mr. Puccini, please bring us up to date as far as what this item is.
Uh, so the executive session was last month where Corporation Counsel, I think, briefed the commission, except for chairman who was not present. So she wanted me to paraphrase these notes. I just wanted to say, like myself, town engineer, water and sewer division have all been involved in getting these improvements or trying to get these improvements finished for probably the last four years since I was hired. So I'll just paraphrase, I won't go over the whole, the entirety of the, the issues over time. But the law department has been involved in this file since twenty twenty-one. To date, the outstanding easements have not been obtained. In fact, we have no evidence of any direct contact between the developer and the property owners regarding obtaining the easements. June twenty twenty-four, law department submitted the developer draft easements. The developer, it was a developer's obligation, the law department shouldn't have done that, but the forms they provided were insufficient. Additionally, in June twenty twenty-four, law department sent a letter to the property owners who will need to provide the town their easements. The town will, she told them the town will not accept the road until the developer obtains the easements and also told them that they should expect to hear from the developer or his attorney regarding the easements. To the best of her knowledge, that has not happened or is happening now. Her office has repeatedly requested the status of obtaining the easements, and it has not been done. The only reason one of the easements has been obtained up to this point is because the property was for sale and the issue was brought to the owner's attention. The developer has two attorneys working on this, but it has not done. The only thing they have said up to this point is that the developer has spoken to the property owners regarding the fences in the easement on March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Again, she sent the attorneys the draft easements, but has not heard anything back as of now.
So kind of at the end of the day, this has been an ongoing issue for quite some time, and.
Correct.
At least our corporate counsel feels that this particular point in time was being proposed as the appropriate action. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Good, okay. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I, I, we, the commission, do have a piece of paper of the subject line, re, re, re-subdivision one oh one dash sixteen Hidden Brook Lane. It is dated with today's date. It's not signed, I don't know the author, but we do have a document that we're all referring to.
Yes.
That was received, sorry about that.
That is a motion written from the law department.
This is the motion?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any commission members with any questions, comments on, on this particular application? Uh, yes, Mr. Parent?
No, I just urge passage of this thing, I mean, four years is a very long time. And when things go on that, it becomes, and when things aren't handled properly, it becomes a reflection on us because we agree things and then people don't do them and nobody doesn't, and nobody seems to be concerned. So I think that passing this motion or passing the motion, we kind of revitalize things, let people know, yes, we look at things and yes, we are serious. And yes, we expect developers to live up to their obligations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vino. Saw you put your bike on. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just a, a question through you to the town planner, and I agree with Mr. Commissioner Parent's comments. To the town planner, are we aware of any other bonds in jeopardy in town that we should be looking at that aren't four years old? That where work hasn't been performed? Or is this the only one in your office that is in jeopardy?
No, this is the only one because it is a subdivision and the road has not been accepted by the town. So this is the only one. Generally, most developers want to finish the road so it gets accepted. This has been ongoing for, you know, probably more, more than four years, obviously, but.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So apparently this is a, it's a public hearing. Any members of the public? Any members of the public like to speak on the application? Please come forward and name an address. Seeing none, bring it back to the commission if they've had any final comments before I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application one oh one dash one three, uh, re-subdivision Hidden Brook Lane, consideration and possible action on calling the, of bonds.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, beginning, uh, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, now I'd entertain a, uh, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, that the commission makes the following findings regarding the approved subdivision, subdivision at five thirty Church Street, Hidden Brook Lane. One, the approved subdivision requires the developer to grant to the town of Wallingford easements as shown on the approved plans. Two, the developer has failed to provide the stormwater access and drainage easements to properties. One snow storage easement and one sightline easement, and sold the lots without reserving the easements. Three, the town has received one sightline easement from one of the property owners. Four, additionally, the two properties with the stormwater access and drainage easements have fences within the easement area. Five, prior to the stormwater access and drainage easements being accepted by the town, the developer must clear and remove any vegetation at the storm outlet F E S dash one, and has not done so to date. Six, further, the developer has failed to reimburse the Wallingford Police Department for a street sign and stop sign the department installed on the street as the developer failed to do so, and it was determined to be a public safety issue. Seven, upon such time as the easements are properly conveyed to the town and any other outstanding issues resolved, the town will not accept the road as a public street. And eight, despite repeated demand for the completion of this work to this date, the remaining easements have not been executed and submitted to the town. Therefore, based upon the developer's failure to obtain the easements, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby authorizes the calling of the bond in the amount of thirty-nine thousand four hundred hours, and the town planner is to proceed with obtaining the necessary easements and completing any outstanding work in order to result in the acceptance of Hidden Brook Lane as a town street in accordance with the regulations.
Thank you. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes. All right, with that, uh, we'll move down to the bond releases. So, uh, Mr. Puccini, if you please, uh, take over for the rest of the meeting.
Uh, bond release for five twenty-four South Cherry Street, that was underground tank farm at B Y K, that can be released.
Okay, do we have a motion, uh, to release the, uh, the bond on AZ Corporation at five twenty-four South Cherry Street?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the bond for AZ Corp., five twenty-four South Cherry Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstains? Thank you, moving on.
Uh, administrative approvals, uh, any questions on those? Uh, Z B A, April decisions?
Anyone with questions on Z B A decisions?
And then any questions on next month's, uh, or next week's Z B A meeting?
Seeing none, uh, seems like we have come to the, uh, end of our agenda. If there's no other, uh, business, I would, uh, entertain a motion to.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could just make one comment.
Absolutely.
Um, we had our regional planning meeting last week, and there are two summer interns available to either this commission or the town planner. Um, and apparently, the, these, uh, college, uh, masters level interns are pretty good at what they do. Um, they could help with just about anything, uh, P O C D, uh, text amendment revisions, uh, trail mapping. Um, so if we need some help, they're, they're available through the regional planning office.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
So with that, uh, there's no other, uh, items before, come, before coming, uh, to this commission? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission for Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're adjourned, thank you.